All's order, the Sagatuck Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting September 11th, 2023. And Cindy's got some things to say.
Um, we're going to proceed as um. We're expected to proceed and intended to proceed in an orderly manner. Cooperation of all in attendance is anticipated and will be appreciated. People in attendance are invited to be heard on any petition that they may be interested in, regardless of where they may live. All presentations, questions, and comments and replies are to be directed to the chairperson. No person shall address the ZBA or otherwise question or comment upon any matter without first being recognized by the chair. Once recognized by the chairperson, each person shall give the person's name and address before addressing the chair or otherwise questioning or commenting on any matter. Once we open the public hearing, we are going to alternate between audience members and Zoom participants in order to make sure everybody has a fair opportunity to speak. If you're going to speak from the audience, please take a moment to, when we get there, we're not there yet, we have to do our business first, but when we do open the public hearing, the podium will be open to all, and if you form a line of three or four people at the podium, we will call you in the order that you are available. Are there any questions on that part? Okay, Tammy.
Can everybody hear me? Very well, okay. As to the approval of the agenda for this meeting. Oops, I'm sorry, I meant to call the all of everybody before we start. Okay.
Uh, Princess, here. Felker?
Here.
Her, here. Stuart?
Here.
Webster, here.
Approval of the agenda for this meeting, the chair will entertain a motion and a second from the board to approve the agenda for this meeting.
Sub moved.
Second?
Support.
Justice and Webster.
Um.
Princess.
So, um. It's been removed by Catherine Justice and seconded by Denise Webster. The agenda for the meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals is approved, uh, September 11th, 2023.
Voice vote.
Voice vote, aye?
Aye.
Name? Um, the motion is carried.
Minutes.
Approved the minutes of the meeting of August 2nd, 2023. Chair will entertain a motion and second for the board to approve the minutes of the meeting of zoning board of appeals held on August 2nd, 2023.
Sub moved.
Second?
Uh, sure, I'll second.
We have, um. Removed by Catherine Justice and seconded by Denise Webster. Zodi Board of Appeal approves minutes of the last meeting of the board, which took place on the 2nd of, um, August 2023. Uh, the motion carries, you know, you have to have a voice vote. Give me your voice vote, voice, ah, I'm sorry, all votes, all, all four?
Aye.
Aye, all votes. The motion is carried. I've noticed that the chair, that the, uh, the court reporter is present to transcribe all verbal comments and statements made during this meeting. This is not the normal procedure for taking the minutes of the board's meeting. As a result, the chair would enter in a motion and second to accept the court reporter's record of these proceedings and supplement to it as part of the regular minutes of the meeting, subject to review of the board at its next meeting.
Sub moved.
Second.
And, uh, that was.
Yes.
Webster.
Moved by, uh. By Denise Webster and, uh, seconded by.
Rex.
Rex Falzer, uh, voice vote, all, all vote, all four?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all votes. The motions carried. As to the public comment on unrelated matters. At this time, the board will, board will hear a public comment on any matter not related to the case of Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance v. Sagatuck Township and North Shores of Sagatuck LLC. Pending an allegations court, Allegany County Court, case numbers 1758936-AA and 11859598-AA. To clarify, board requests that public reserve comment on any matters dealing with the coastal alliance and North Shore's development at this time. Those matters will be addressed very soon at the public hearing of this meeting. Anyone offering public comment on these matters unrelated to the matter between the SDCA and North Shore shall have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before speaking. Anybody? Is there anybody on the Zoom? That has comments? Let's move to Zoom now. Uh, as to unfinished business, the board's not aware of any unfinished business. New business, Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance requests appeal of the planning commission's preliminary approval of new east side condo and SAU approval of North Shores of Sagatuck LLC. As to the order of remand, uh, from the Circuit Court of Allegan County, I will now read that. The court conducted a hearing on April 24th, 2023 regarding the appellate's motion to strike, at which all parties were in attendance. In lieu of issuing a decision regarding the appellate's motion to strike, the court hereby remands the case to the Sagatuck Township Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to MCL 125.3606-2 and the Michigan Supreme Court's decision in Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance v. Sagatuck Township 509 Michigan 561 in 2022. This court, for reasons stated on the record, determines that the record is inadequate to make the review required by MCL 125.3605 and MCL 125.3606-1 and finds that additional material evidence exists that with good reason was not presented to the ZBA. The ZBA is instructed to decide that Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance has standing to appeal the decision of the planning commission based upon the test announced in the above cited Supreme Court decision. The ZBA is also instructed to consider the evidence submitted to it previously and also additional material evidence that with good reason was not presented previously for the purposes of analyzing standing and to follow the procedure outlined in MCL 12533606-2. As to limitations of public comments. According to section 2.3 of rules and procedure of the Sagatuck Township Zoning Board of Appeals, the chairperson has authority to establish reasonable conditions for persons wishing to speak during public hearing portion of this meeting. Due to the number of persons present and the complexity of the issues presented to the Board of Appeals, the following conditions shall apply to those making public comment on a matter between SDCA and North Shores. Counselor Zepka representing the coastal alliance and North Shores will be called upon first to present respective positions of their clients. By agreement, the council will be restricted, restricted their presentations to the issues of what material evidence exists regarding standing that with good reason was not presented to the zoning board of appeals at its honest meetings, October 11th, 2017, 2017, and April 9th, 2018. Comments by counsel will be limited to 30 minutes. The SDCA council may reserve time for rebuttal. Second, after completion of the presentation by counsel, board will accept comments from the public limited to three minutes. Please identify yourself by name, state, and whether you reside in this, uh, Sagatuck Township. The chair and attorney for the council coastal alliance and North Shore request that you limit your comments at this meeting to the issue of what documents submitted to this board by either coastal alliance or North Shores are material to whether the SDCA has standing and whether there is good reason for the party's failure to submit the documents in consideration by this board at the meetings held in October 11th, 2017, and April 9th, 2018. There will be an opportunity for counsel and the public to comment at a later date on the issue of whether the SDCA has standing based on the materials submitted to the ZBA previously and additional materials evidence with good reason was not presented at the October 17th and the April 18th meetings and the test announced by the Michigan Supreme Court in the coastal dunes alliance versus Sagatuck Township and North Shores of Sagatuck. 509 Michigan. 561 in 2022. Is there any objection to these, these terms? Okay, um. The chair will now entertain a motion from the board to open public hearing portion of this meeting. Board. Is moved by.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Rex Felker and seconded by Catherine Justice. The public comment portion of the zoning board of appeals meeting September 11th, 2023 be opened. All favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The board meeting is open. Public talk, do the, uh. Do the council.
Public hearing, board meeting is open, right?
Yeah, public hearing is open. We'll hear from the council for the parties.
Scott, so that you understand, each council has 30 minutes, you can reserve a portion of your comments for rebuttal. But you still get 30 minutes open.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I would like to enjoy your final minutes.
We'll, we'll advise you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Scott Howard, Fort Wayne East Front Street, Character City, Michigan, of the block of the Holson, Mississauga, Howard, and here on behalf of the Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance. I'd like to start off this type of presentation with a little bit of a roadmap to figure out where we're going and, uh, how we're gonna get there. So, the key issue in this, uh, remand case is whether or not the coastal alliance has standing to file an appeal. And as my kids say, spoiler alert, it does. Uh, and we're gonna discuss that with you over tonight's meeting and at subsequent meetings, but I want to start off with the, uh, the proposition of, uh, why we are here before this ZBA. I want to talk to you a little bit about your zoning ordinance, why, why it brings us to you. I also want to talk about, um. What does this kind of goofy term standing mean? Us lawyers throw it around a lot, but what does it, what does it mean, uh, in sort of a point in which kind of? The third thing I want to do is talk a little bit about the history of the case and the appeal, how we got here. And, um, I will give you what I would call the clip note, my clip notes, uh, the information that you need to read from the lower court filings, and that is just a couple of documents, so we'll talk about that. Uh, the fourth thing I want to talk about is the process that decision's gonna take, and then the fifth thing is really the meat of the decision or the venture that could be taken of the decision is, is it's all in my house. Uh, what evidence should be admitted for the standing analysis, uh, and ready to consider? It's one of his use of a clicker that's ever happened. Thanks, man, for saying that when I was away. Why are we here? The township, now normally, I would expect this zoning board of appeals has this deal of questions about marineses and things of the like, and doesn't see a lot of appeals from the decision of the planning. But, uh, your table of, in section 40, 1046, the table of uses uh, for included in your zoning ordinance clearly requires a special use permit for marinas in the R2 district, and that's the bit that applies to North Shores. There's also specific regulations about what you can do with water from property and access to it. In particular, 40, section 4910H says, "In no event shall a canal or channel be excavated for the purpose of increasing the water drainage required by this section." So no event shall this canal or channel be excavated. Unfortunately, the planning commission approved a project that does just that, and that's why we wanted to get to an appeal. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to do that since 2017. So. What, what's the reason for that? That is, we've been caught up in this, this determination of whether or not the coastal alliance has standing to appeal. And standing means an individual or organization or entity has the legal right to initiate a zoning appeal. So, uh, that entity must, or a person must have a sufficient interest in the appeal that will, quote, "will be detrimentally affected in a manner different in kind and more significant in degree than the, than, uh, than the effects on others in the local community." Let me say that one more time, it's from the Supreme Court, and I'll say it more smoothly. "Would be detrimentally affected in a manner differently in kind or more significant, significant in degree than effects on others in the local community." That's that new, part of that new standing test that we'll be talking about throughout this process. So, that's what we're talking about, uh, when we discuss standing. Standing's historically been described as a gatekeeping function. So that you have, make sure that you have the right property, the right parties in the room that have an actual dispute. It's not intended to be an adjudication on the merits. It's not, uh, intended to have a decision that relies on, uh, a preponderance of the evidence standard or, uh, no reasonable doubt standard. It is a threshold determination to make sure that the right parties are in the room. I mentioned we were gonna talk a little bit about the history of the matter, and I'd give you that short fact, so here it is. In 2017 and 2018, there are two Zoning Board of Appeals determinations that the coastal alliance did not have standing that those decisions were appealed to the circuit court and the court of appeals, and ultimately after the Michigan Supreme Court. And the Michigan Supreme Court said in absence, the wrong test was used and the wrong analysis was done in this case, and then it remanded the case back to the, uh, back to ultimately the trial court, Judge Tangis in this case. And then Judge Tangis, as you heard in the order that was read by the chair earlier, turned around and remanded the case back to you. So, here we are. With, uh, with, here we are with, what I would tell you are two very important documents and a lot of documents that I think, uh, would, would make for some uh, good reading if you're, if you have insomnia late at night. Um, but otherwise, I would say that you could short circuit that extra credit reading and just pay attention to few things. One is the order that we're talking about of remand, because that tells me what evidence you're supposed to be looking for in this particular hearing tonight. And two is the copy of the Michigan Supreme Court's opinion, that's number 30, I believe, in the townships, uh, your township legal council submitted to you. So, number 30 is that document that comes from the Michigan Supreme Court. And I won't labor at you with reading chromatised yet, I will spend a lot of time on that in a subsequent meeting. But I would tell you that if you pay particular attention to pages 27 and 28 of that opinion, uh, that's gonna provide you with some substantial guidance. And, uh, I would tell you that you don't really need to read us, the, the documents that us lawyers submitted to various courts below explaining what our arguments overall bring in. And the Michigan Supreme Court really starts the conversation here because it's, it came, it developed that new test that it said is, is what you need to be looking at, um, as, when we review this as a zoning board of appeals. So, here we are in the process, uh, there are really three steps, in my opinion, in this process. One is to review, build the new evidence. Two is to evaluate standing, and three is to consider the merits. And as the chair indicated, the, we are on, uh, box number one, and that's where we'll stay tonight, and that's what I will, will continue to address, uh, in my comments going forward. Judge Tangis is the order talking about material evidence and evidence that is, uh, evidence that is both material and evidence that had, there was good reason that it was not included in the original submission to the zoning board of appeals back in 2017. So, those three words are really critical here, so let's talk about each of them, or one, actually, it's one word and a phrase, but either way, we'll, we'll talk about both of them. Uh, first is, what evidence, what makes evidence material? When we talk about material evidence, what does that mean? Uh, evidence is material and that's related, it's related to matters and controversy. And here, new evidence is material if it relates to the interests potentially impacted by a proposed project that the coastal alliance members have advanced by. How about an example, though, because that's probably just maybe a little bit more, uh, definition giving and isn't quite as concrete as an example. So the Beely family is a member, are members of the coastal alliance and have been very concerned about the aesthetic impacts, among other things, on their property of this proposed project. So what type of, what type of evidence is material to the Beely's concerns? Well, for example, photographs showing what their beachhead looks like, what their, what, what it looks like to look at the north shore property from their own property. That would be material evidence that relates to that concern that they, that they have expressed. Now, let's go on to the next, the, the second part of that, this inquiry, and talk about the good reason. Good reason has been defined by courts to mean new evidence that may be considered when evidence did not exist at the time of determination and was not discovered until much later. New evidence also may be considered when the decider makes an initial decision based on a misunderstanding or incomplete evidence. So, those two, I think, are fairly easy to follow, and, um, the most logical reason why, and the most prevalent reason why something is, or it was, would be, would have not been presented in 2017 is that it just didn't exist at that time. And now you have material evidence that does exist. Going back to our example of the Beely property, you'll see some photographs later on in some of our slides, and those are some of the documents that we think are material and would like to include in the evidence you consider. Those photographs didn't exist in 2017. A part of the reason that they didn't exist in 2017 is because there hadn't been development activity by North Shores at that point. We'll look at, take a look at a sort of a before and after, uh, view of, of some of the development activities, and that helps you and helps us understand what we talk about when we're talking about material evidence that relates to those concerns that the Beelys have expressed, and those concerns turn, take us back to the standing inquiry and help us establish standing on behalf of the Beely, now made in the coastal alliance. So that's what we thought, that's what we mean when we talk about good reason. So let's talk a little bit about some of the, the evidence that we presented to you, and put it in this blue binder for you to, to, uh, to consider and keep track of. And another example of, uh, material evidence that wasn't presented to the zoning board of appeals in 2017 for a good reason is studies and information from, uh, from scientists that have, that have been developed and have occurred since 2017 in the interim. There's been a number of these studies, and those are the types of studies that certainly are material to the extent that they relate back to those concerns expressed to give the coastal alliance standing, and then for good, they were not produced for good reason because they didn't exist at the time. One of the critical, uh, uh, discussion points in this particular appeal in discussion of standings is the impact that this project will have, or will likely have on some globally rare comparable interdual wetlands. I want to pause for a minute just to consider the importance of that description. They are globally rare, in other words, they don't really exist anyplace else in the world. And we're doing something that's going to impact those interdual wetlands. Is that material for the concerns of the coastal alliance? It sure is, you have folks within, that are members of the coastal alliance that have been studying those dual, those interdual land systems for their entire professional career. You have folks who use and enjoy a property around those interdual wetlands and love to go look at them because they can't find them anyplace else. And they, you have folks that enjoy the wildlife habitat and the natural features that surround those interdual wetlands that are at risk here and are potentially going to be impacted. And you have scientists who are telling you that these impacts are gonna happen. So is that material? You bet. Is there a good reason for not producing it in 2017? You bet, because it didn't exist. Another important piece of evidence that, uh, you will find in the blue binder is, uh, information related to the Army Corps of Engineers findings on impacts of the proposed Marina project. And one of the important things that is at issue here is, here and I suspect there are suggestions from North Shores Council that there is, that there will be, you know, substantive impact on, uh, the coastal alliance members, um, because they're either too far away or too remote from the project. Not true. When you look at what the Army Corps of Engineers says and the zone of audible influence and visual influence that the Army Corps has identified in this particular area, you will see clearly a relationship between this particular project and the concerns that the coastal alliance members have expressed about those exact auditory and visual concerns. We talked already a little bit about scientific studies and opinions. Here's just a, a list of, uh, some of these now. You, you have, each of these are dated later than the 2017 hearing, uh, original hearing of the zoning. original hearing that the zoning board of appeals. But as you can see, there's been substantial work on the, on, uh, the scientific side of things. Sorry, these are all coming up one bit at a time, but I was supposed to transition from one, one list to the next, but in, in any event, you see that those started in twenty eighteen, uh, or at least one was twenty seventeen, I believe, actually after the ZBA, original ZBA decision, and then all the way up to present date. We talked a little bit, uh, a, a little while ago about photos of the area and the Beely property. Now here's a, here's a visual for you to, uh, that, that shows the Beely property on September ninth, twenty seventeen, before any excavation or cut, cutting, uh, cutting of trees in the laydown area. Here's your after photo. And, uh, that, what I best call a bald patch up on the top of the hill is the laydown area where North Shores is planning to stack up their sand from the dredging activities for the Marina. And as you can see there in the little box, that's the Beely property just below the ridge down past where the, the laydown area is located. Here's a view of what it looks like now that they had cut the trees up on the ridge. You can see the blue sky coming through where it used to be thick trees. The red shipping container in the middle of this photograph is, uh, a piece of material that's on the North Shore's property. So here's a photograph that's from the Beely property, looking directly at the North Shore project. And here's a photograph that helps you understand where his Beely cottage is and relationships to that sightline directly to the North Shore project. Again, all of which are pieces of information that help you understand the actual potential impact on the Beelys if this project goes forwards. And, and we'll, we'll certainly hear, uh, that the Beelys are too far away, they won't be able to see a thing, and they're in a crowded forested area. That's just not true, and the photographs show that's the case. Finally, here's an aerial view of the excavated, excavation and wetlands to contrast with, excavation and emergent wetlands to contrast with that green picture that you saw from twenty seventeen. Again, material, and there's a good reason, absolutely, because the, these, these activities hadn't happened as of the, the, uh, the first date in twenty seventeen. Uh, so it would be impossible to provide you those, uh, until after that first date. The Beelys also have the, uh, unfortunate circumstance of finding trails, trail cameras pointed at their property, no trespassing signs, other activities by North Shores that are, uh, not only, uh, what we suggest are neighborly, but also provide a unique impact on the Beely property that is not shared by others in the community. Finally, you have an affidavit from the coastal alliance members that you've been presented with your materials. And those those affidavits are, um, either from folks who did, had, had, did not have the opportunity to testify before the zoning board of appeals the last time around, or who had the opportunities, did speak and did provide information, but are providing further information for you, uh, further detail for you, and they're, um, in, for purposes of your consideration. And why is that sort of further detail, A? It only makes sense in light of the fact that the Supreme Court has changed the standards and the analysis that you have to do in order to determine whether or not standing exists. And providing you with further information that is specifically tailored and uniquely, uh, situated to address those exact concerns that the Supreme Court addressed, addressed in its opinion, are exactly the types of, uh, materials that are, that we talked about in that sort of second standard, uh, for good cause or good reason. That is, you didn't have the right information, uh, that previously because you were analyzing this case on, under the wrong standard. Here's some people that are helping explain to you, um, what is, what their interests are and how they relate to that Supreme Court opinion. Finally, I'd mention that you have, uh, one of the affidavits is Nick Walmas, who was a miner at the prime of twenty seventeen, uh, who is now of age and is on the coastal alliance board, and is, is a member of the coastal alliance, and serves on the board, um, and is, quite honestly, has had a good public speaking, and I suspect he'll hear a compliment at some point during this process. Uh, he is an example of somebody who could not, uh, provide an affidavit for you, because he was not of age, but his, his, he did participate through his family and knowledge of age and, and is providing his own information for you. Now, uh, you have a couple of very different submissions, uh, in, in this case, and, and for consideration tonight. Um, we specifically tailored our presentation to address only the, the issue of, um, what evidence is material and wasn't presented to the ZBA for good reasons. North Shores doesn't, uh, it doesn't discuss that particular question, but does discuss a lot of the substance of the appeal, and does discuss a lot of the substance of, uh, the standing determination. And we respectfully request that you leave, you put those, those portions of their submission aside and wait till the right time to consider those, at which time we certainly will have our response to their allegations. But right now is not, honestly, is, is, uh, per our agreement with the township, now is not the time to be considering the substance of an appeal, because now is not the time to be considering the substance of standing. Now is the time to be considering, what evidence are you going to consider when you determine whether or not standing exists? So I'll, I'll wrap it up by saying those words, those three words again. Evidence that's provided you in that one, in the blue binders is material, and it relates directly to the controversy at issue, uh, whether or not standings exist for the coastal alliance. And there's good reason that those documents were not presented to the zoning board of appeals back in twenty seventeen. The majority of them were documents that didn't exist, and, uh, after, uh, and if they did exist or somebody did testify, the, the remaining documents are documents that help clarify for you that inquiry the Supreme Court had laid out. Uh, the only other item that I do have is that there, there have been, uh, some, some additional documents that have, have literally come into our possession, uh, since the submission of the binder, uh, and, well, I recognize that, that this is, uh, I would, I would rather have those ahead of time for you, uh, within, uh, one document is a, is a letter that just came out. Uh, the other document is a document that relates to the cultural analysis of these properties, and the third document is an affidavit from the affidavit group, uh, did not present an affidavit back in twenty seventeen, but would like to now, just got a signature for that. And I would ask that the chair, if, uh, if, um, the, the zoning board of appeals would allow us to submit those additional documents as three supplemental pieces of information from the binder.
If you wish to submit them, go ahead and submit them.
Thank you. We'll, uh, we'll pass those out here. Yeah, it's okay, it's okay, I'm going to have, have to take those to, pass those out to everybody.
Yeah, sure, give them the name, yes. And according to my watch, you have five minutes left.
Thank you.
And that was all after. So this was not ignoring any sort of guidance or anything like that. It was simply that we had followed the, uh, the, the handshake agreement that we had made in the request from the township's attorney that we sent out documents well in advance of the meeting, which was now almost a month ago, when we submitted those. The focus of tonight's meeting is on the materials that had been submitted. And the place to start with that determination is to look at the order of the circuit course. It says that the court determines that the record is inadequate to make the agreed party review, and that the court finds that additional material evidence suggests that a good cause was not presented as due yet. Perhaps the, this body would have appreciated if the judge would have given you a little more guidance on what it had considered to be that material evidence, or what it considered to be the good cause for why things should be submitted now. But perhaps we may feel a bit blind there a little bit by looking at what happened the last time this was in front of the circuit court. See, the last time around, the court let additional evidence come in at the court level. So the court accepted evidence that hadn't been presented to the CBI. And the court considered that evidence, and in fact, the court based its decision on that evidence. Here's from the transcript from the court's, uh, hearing, uh, back in two thousand and eighteen. First comment, oh, right below the, the Zoom call, uh, headed there, especially, this is the court speaking, especially in light of the evidence that has been, been presented to support of this being environmentally friendly project. The court's referring to evidence that North Shore presented, and that it found persuasive that this was in fact an environmentally friendly project. He made, the judge made comments about the number of boats and boat slips that are docked in the area in the Calum Zoo Harbor, again, reference to the materials that North Shore had submitted that were relevant and material and convincing to the court, uh, and, and which is the same type of evidence that we have now submitted to you again. Another one referring to the number of boats that use the cove, uh, or effectively referred to as party cove near this property. Again, evidence, material evidence submitted by North Shore. And finally, uh, I get my own personal call out here, uh, to evidence submitted by Mr. Gabriel, myself, regarding the development and what it could be zoned as, as a right. So it's reasonable for you to conclude that when the court this time around says there's material evidence that should be included here so I can make an informed decision, that this is what he's referring to. Because this is what he relied on last time when he made the determination, as did this board, that the coastal alliance did not have standings. Now, as, I'm sure all of you know by now, uh, not just anyone can challenge a planning commission's decisions. And that makes good sense. It's only someone that meets the legal requirement of an agreed party that can challenge a decision. If someone can meet that standard of, we have had our legal rights infringed on by this decision, they are the parties that can appeal a planning decision decision. So there, there's no doubt that the coastal alliance is opposed to the development of this property. They would like North Shore's private property to stay in its current state forever. Maybe, maybe some of you all wish you didn't have a neighbor. Maybe some of you all wish that your neighbor hadn't pet down a tree, or two, or ten, that you like it. But that's not standing, that's not being legally agreed. Just because you don't like what your neighbor's doing, and you might see a house that's constructed on your neighbor's property. But, but what you have here in this situation is the coastal alliance is trying to manufacture standings so that they can obstruct the development of this private property. And so you have these claims that just run the gamut, and, and I try to list those that I can, but as you can see, they are numerous. Uh, it, it really does epitomize the kitchen sink approach. Let's throw every negative allegation that we can against the law and see what sticks. That, in a nutshell, is why you have so many pages of submissions from North Shores. Because the coastal alliance allegations cover just about every topic imaginable. It's easy to make an allegation, the boat basin will destroy the nearby wetlands, then North Shore hires a hydrologist, de-watering experts, wetlands experts, you name it, to debunk those claims. The allegations, the words, the scientific reports, we bloody them, take hundreds of pages. And that takes time. Scientific reports obviously are not generated overnight. So let's talk about the good cause of why these materials should be admitted. So first of all, there are a lot of materials in what's submitted by North Shore that are already part of the record. In the instance of convenience, as is quite common when writing briefs in court, we compile all of that information in an appendix with numbered pages so that when you're reading our memo, you can reference it all in the same place. You don't have to reference three different folders all over. So a lot of the material is all made part of the record. Some of the material did not exist at the time. Reports were not done yet as we were trying to respond to these allegations. Some materials we did not have, or I would even say maybe we didn't even know they existed, or because a claim had not been fleshed out of what exactly the allegation was outstanding or how bugs or deer or frogs or grass was going to be affected in the coastal alliance's opinion, we didn't know exactly what we needed to compile to respond. But I can tell you that all the materials submitted are submitted to respond to that huge list of allegations that have been made. So they are material. And there's good cause why they should be acknowledged. And I would just mention, and you certainly will have the time to discuss and get counsel from your counsel about the the new process procedure of someone, in this case, the coastal alliance making claims that they have standing. And if you would make a decision not to allow North Shore to submit documents that respond to those allegations, that is an appealable issue we need to have. And so we would submit to you that the documents submitted by North Shore should be accepted. They are material. They are relevant. There is good cause. And they are responsive to the documents that have been submitted by the coastal alliance. Now, as you make this decision on what materials to accept, it's good to ultimately understand the decision you have to make. And I have a few comments about that. I'm not going to put up photos and make substantive arguments. I'm going to stick to simply addressing some overarching suggestions on how this should be handled. We'll wait to discuss the issues and the claims. And yes, I mentioned to respond to some of the substance that was put up on the screen already, but we'll wait till next time to do that. So here's my first suggestion in addressing this focus is you need to focus on the approval. Focus on the approval. You'll need to ask yourself, what did the planning commission approve? And do the alleged harms relate to that approval? Or is the opposition and the frustration really that this property is zone R2, which gives certain rights, which we'll talk about in a second? So here's what I mean. And I've got something on the screen if you're able to see this. So let's say you have a vacant piece of land. It's got some trees on it and it's zone R2. The owner of that land is entitled to develop that land in accordance with R2 regulations. So there might be some houses on it. If it's waterfront, maybe there's some boats or some boat slips. The density and configuration would be determined by R2 zoning, depending on how many homes would fit, the minimum lot size, required setbacks, et cetera. You guys know all that sort of thing. And this would be done without planning commission approval. This is what's referred to often as development by right. Somebody that owns a property that's zoning a certain way has the right, baked into the fact that they own real estate, that they can develop it in accordance with the zoning regulations. Let's say an owner decided that instead of this configuration, they thought a different configuration was more preferable. They thought, let's consolidate the houses into a smaller area, smaller setbacks and everything, and that will allow us to preserve a larger contiguous area in its natural state. It's not more houses. It's not more boats. It's just a different configuration. And your township has an ordinance that allows for just that. Sometime reading the preamble to the PUD section, it says exactly that. Under some instances, a different configuration makes sense. That does require planning commission approval, not of the right to put houses or boats or boat slips on your property in R2, but of the configuration. So I would suggest if you focus on the appeal, determine whether the alleged harms relate to the different configuration on the right side there on the screen, or whether they really relate to the fact that there's going to be something other than trees on the property. But another way is the objection, really, that this was zoned R2 a number of years ago? We'll talk about that next time. My next suggestion to you is to stay in your lane. Now, when somebody says that, there can often be some negative connotations to that. But I don't mean that in this instance. Instead, I see this as permission for you to not be an expert on everything. It's permission to do well the specific tasks that are in front of you as a zoning board of appeals, as an appellate body of the planning commission, and to let other agencies and organizations do the same. Here's what I mean. Planning commission and by extension the ZBA is responsible for applying zoning ordinances, approving variances, and there might be a number of other tasks, but those are the two that really relate to the instance here. At the same time, in a different lane, if you will, there are any number of agencies that are responsible for other matters related to development. You may know, you may not know all the acronyms of the agencies up there. The first one, USACE is the United States Army Corps of Engineers. Then you've got the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, the Alleghen County Health Department, the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office. We could continue. But the point is that they all have roles and responsibilities, strengths, as does this board and as does the planning commission. Next time, we'll talk about how the planning commission recognized that distinction, recognized its lane, its role, and very intentionally stayed in it by what they put in the approvals. So we'll talk about that. So we're asked that you stay in the lane. There are certain things that are the purview of the Army Corps, Eagle, the Health Department and shipyards. And we would request that you under those. Third suggestion is to remember that fear does not equal fact. Just because someone expresses concern about something does not mean that concern is warranted. For example, if I say, I am concerned that the roof is going to fall. Great remodel job, but if I were to say that, does that mean that the roof is unsafe? Just because I said I'm concerned about it? No. What if I worded it differently and I want to convey to you the significance of how strongly I feel about this? And so I say I'm going to act differently. And I say something like, if the roof is not replaced, I won't come in the building. A little stronger. I've told you I'll act on that belief of mine. Still, does that make the roof unsafe? No. Fear does not equal fact. Just because somebody says it doesn't make it true. The suggestion is to keep that in mind as you're reviewing statements in this case. Fourth suggestion is to remember that nothing has changed since the last time this board determined the coastal alliance does not have standing. Nothing has changed that would require a different result. Contrary to what the coastal alliance wants you to think, the courts did not rewrite the law. In its opinion, the Supreme Court uses words like limited to the limited extent and modest clarification to the law. That's the Supreme Court's own words. And I'm going to show you what the Supreme Court did. So this is a paragraph from the Olson case. Don't bother trying to lead it all right now because we're not going to get into details. But I underline a phrase in there. Other property owners similarly situated. The Supreme Court changed this phrase. And instead of other property owners similarly situated, the Supreme Court instead said others in the local community. Stated another way, here's a simplified form of the central question in this case related to agreed party. Have members of the coastal alliance suffered harm that is different from blank? Court of Appeals previously had put in there, other property owners similarly situated. And the Supreme Court said, we're going to clarify that. And it's going to be others in the local community. We'll get into the details of how that's applied, but just wanted to touch base on this. This again is why the Supreme Court used words like limited extent and modest clarification of the law. This body has already determined twice that the coastal alliance is not an agreed party. Nothing has changed that would require a different result. So those are my four suggestions that I have for you as you're thinking about the bigger picture of agreed party standards and more in the context of tonight of what materials should be allowed in. That is all I have unless any of you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, come on. Do we give five for about? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I had to break. Yes.
Thanks. Thank you, Scott Howard, again. I'll be, I promise I'll be less than five minutes. I want to maybe start at the end of the discussion where counsel left off. And that is, I think we have a fundamental difference of opinion about what the Supreme Court said. And at the end of the day, you all will have to make some decisions based on that. I'm going to ask you to take a good heart read of that case. We referenced it in the discussion earlier. And again, the last few pages that you were talking about are pretty clear to me. Especially when the court says, instead, we vacate part four of the Court of Appeals' opinion. Vacate the Alleghen cert- certainly of course judgment regarding standing and remand both cases to the circuit court for further reconsideration of appellate side. So to me, that is not status quo. That is not, nothing's changed. That is, take a look at this in light of what we have done here in clarifying, if you want to call it clarification, or if you want to call it a change. It really is a distinction without a difference because the Supreme Court was very clear about what sort of considerations need to be taken into account. And those weren't in the court's opinion properly addressed in the previous rulings. Otherwise, it would have said, we affirm our four of the Court of Appeals' opinion. And we affirm the circuit court's decision. I think that there is actually some agreement among the parties about that the evidence needs to be material and there needs to be a good reason as to why that evidence wasn't submitted the first time around. The, I think the difference is we did our best to provide you with exactly that information about exactly the documents that we put together in the bond card. And I still don't know exactly which of North Shore's documents are approved or which can cause and which ones are material and which ones are not. So my suggestion is that at some point, that needs to be sifted out. And we need to make sure that we're complying with the circuit court's order to remand the case for purposes of determining what was material evidence that was not provided the first time around for good reason. And those words have meaning and they're important to stick to in this case. I want to talk about everybody's lane here. And I think that to use the reference, and I think that the lane, it's important to understand that you have, within the context of zoning and other regulations, you have multiple overlapping jurisdictions. And there are plenty of times where zoning considerations need be decided along with a permit from Eagle, for example, or a permit from the Army Corps or a permit from the county. That happens all the time. And in fact, lots of times you'll see in decisions by planning commission or a zoning administrator, a condition that's attached to those permits that say, you have to go get your permit from the county health department or you have to go get your permit from Eagle as a part of this. We have concurrent jurisdiction. We make a decision as does this other body. So to suggest that you don't have any role in the regulation of marinas is in fact not true. And that was that first, I guess, or the second slide that we showed you earlier tonight is very clear that marinas are something that need to be approved by the planning commission as a special use. And that means there is concurrent jurisdiction between you and any other body that of state or federal government that also approves a marina.
One minute, Warren.
Thanks. I told you that I would not take five minutes and I'm going to loop up to that promise and say, thank you for your attention tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions either now or throughout the process.
Thank you to both of you. Do we need a five minute break? Anybody? Okay, so let's keep going. Do we have a motion to open public comment?
Well, that's already been opened. Yeah, just move on.
Let's move on to the members of Zoom and the members of the public. First spot is available to members here.
Hello, my name is Hallie Engel and I live at 3171 Light House Way in Saginaw Township. I serve as a member of the Calum Doolay Harbor Authority, a cabinet best chance charter pitching, which is our family's fourth generation of business here in the community. I also work as a local mortgage I also work as a local mortgage broker, but tonight I'm speaking on behalf of Sagittuck Boon, Coastal Alliance members and our supporters. First, I want to thank the ZBA members and alternatives for your service. The Alliance appreciates the time and attention you're giving this in future hearings and all the work that you'll do to prepare for them. We promise to do what we can do to be clear and substantive in our communications and respectful of this process and your time. In that spirit, rather than asking all or many of our supporters to speak this evening, I'm asking those in the room and those on Zoom to raise their hands to the heavens. A few individuals may decide to make their own comments, which is permitted under the Open Meeting Act, but I'm speaking for the general membership of our alliance. On behalf of the Coastal Alliance, I would like to make two key points. First, we believe you strongly have the criteria proceeding, but that's a topic for another meeting. Secondly, we believe the evidence submitted by our legal team, which for a good reason was not available when we originally made our case, no team in 2015 and 2018, will be very useful in your decision making. This evidence is material to your decision. We hope you decide to accept this evidence in your decision that you will be making. Again, on behalf of the Coastal Alliance, we thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in Zoom?
Lana Pollak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is that too loud?
No.
Okay, good. Okay. Thank you. And thank you for giving me these three minutes to express my concern with this, with this project. My name is Lana Pollak. I live at 414 North Main Street in Ann Arbor, Michigan. In nineteen, in, in 2009, I was a chair of the, of the Natural Resources Trust Fund Board. That is a constitutionally recognized board in, in Michigan that uses public dollars to purchase and preserve natural areas. I'm also a Coastal Alliance supporter of many years. When the decision was made to, to recommend to the legislature the $10.5 million for the acquisition of the Sagittuck Harbor natural areas, it was the largest sum of money ever appropriated by that trust fund, which was then, I'm thinking 30 years old. And it's still one of the largest contributions. Now, that was based on an understanding, but based on actually the, the unique natural value of the Sagittuck area and the natural resources, plus the history of the Sagittuck community and area in protecting that natural area. Unfortunately, a proposed marina would definitely have a material impact on the values that the public dollars were set out to support. So we, we understood that then. We understand that more clearly today with the submission of the several documents from the Potawatomi Nations, the National Historic, the National Register of Historic Places, the Army Corps of Engineers, and several others. So it is the addition of that information that reinforces the value of the natural areas and this essential connectedness of the area that the public dollars were spent to protect and the areas that are now threatened. I ask that you consider this. I trust that you are and can see that you are a considerate body listening carefully. And I thank you with respect for hearing me tonight.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anybody in the audience?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Engel. I live at 3041 Indian Point Road in Sagittuck Township. I have submitted an affidavit, but I also am here on behalf of my husband, David Engel, who is not able to be here. My family are charter fishing captains and myself, of course, as a single real estate broker. And we are all lifelong residents of the tribe community. I have a few main points I'd like to reiterate. One, the likely dangers to navigation. If a boat is coming from the lake and taking a left into the proposed marina, consider the possibilities of the backing up of the channel boats as well as those in the river coming from downtown. The endangering of the small cracks like kayaks, canoes, or smaller fishing vessels. And the present congestion at the basin, a safe harbor and a boating destination. To proceed with a marina at this point already congested, pointing in the rivers, clearly or planning will likely result in a marine tragedy. I was surprised tonight to hear the council tell you to stay in your own lane with that comment. That this shouldn't affect you, that this shouldn't. Personally, many of you have a boat and you do travel that, that course. I do hope that you do in fact, could you conserve yourself with this? And many of you boating members will personally be affected by, if you take his advice. Secondly, the disruption of the fishing grounds. The DNR plants over 100,000 baleen salmon every year. Every other year, which has proven to be illibertive to both Michigan's residential recreation and tourism industry. Third, I've submitted my own affidavit regarding my concerns as a real estate broker. Above all, my clients need to be assured that zoning laws are stable and enforced, especially those that are in to protect the area's natural resources, which in turn drive property values. I'm very concerned of the planning commissions, preliminary approval of marina and low bas- basin and clear violation of local zoning and tribe community master plan will disrupt Sagittuck's strong real estate industry. Thank you for joining me tonight.
Thank you. Now that I see the hands up, back to Zoom.
Matthew?
Yes. Uh, bujujayakinwa, Matthew Bustler, Indigenous Akas, Bodwadwadmi and Dalbukagminia, Kandabandagwas. My name is Matthew Bustler and I'm the tribal historic preservation officer for the Pokemian Band of Potawatomi Indians. We're based out of DeWajac, Michigan, and we have a 10 county service area in southwest Michigan and northern Indiana. I am here to speak on anticipated negative impacts and damages to the Potawatomi community that would result from the development of the proposed marina basin by the North Shores of Sagittuck LLC. Within the Zagatuck, traditional cultural property, which has been deemed eligible for the listing by the Keeper of the National Register of Historic Places in 2020, after the initial Eagle permit was approved in 2017. Alligan County and areas adjacent to the Kalamazoo River, including the location of the proposed marina basin, represent areas that are crucially important to the Pokemian Band because of our ancestral ties to the region and our desire to protect our homelands. This is including the Kalamazoo Rivermouth TCP for the next seven generations. Multiple tribes, including the Pokemian Band, Machu Manchuish Band, Nautu Wasepahirin Band of Potawatomi, have, have affirmed the historical use of the area that includes the project. Leopold Pokemian is the namesake of the Pokemian Band. Leopold Pokemian is directly associated with the Kalamazoo Rivermouth through his utilization and settlement in the Odawa and Bodwadwadmi village Zagatuck. Leopold's Potawatomi name, Sakewunik, means man of the outlet of the river. The name Sagatuck comes from the word Zagituck, which means mouth of the outlet of the river. This demonstrates the strong connection our community has with the area and how the area is represented with a term that was derived from our traditional language. This property contains multiple significant cultural resources that are important to indigenous communities, including the Potawatomi, and contribute to the significance of the mouth of the Kalamazoo River. The property includes the man, lake sturgeon, suckers, manoman, which is wild rice, black and other ash trees, birch, maple, reeds, cattails, and other various plants, and also animals that are culturally significant elements that are known and understood through tribal stories, oral histories, clan relationships, and ongoing cultural practices. This cultural landscape's historic and current functions include, but are not limited to seasonal village sites, camps, a site for offerings, prayer, ceremony, culture and language revitalization, hunting, fishing, trapping, harvesting, inter and intra tribal group gatherings, spiritual and mental health associations, the burials and graves of our ancestors, view shed, interdunal forests, wetlands, rivers, lakes, creeks, and marshes. The Kalamazoo Rivermouth TCP and resources within would most definitely be adversely affected by the proposed development activities. Therefore, the Pokemian Band is strongly opposed to the construction of the marina basin in Kalamazoo River. In conclusion, to appropriately steward the Kalamazoo Rivermouth TCP and its environmental, cultural, and historical significance, and to avoid severe damages to the well-being of many indigenous communities, cultural and traditional lifeways, all measures should be taken to avoid the permitting and approval of this developmental project. Chumigwech, great thanks for your time and consideration of our concerns.
Thank you. Is there anybody here?
Bujujayakinwa, Lakota Hobai, Indigenous Akas, Fordro, Iwanyu Kwenda, Shishwani, Kandabandagwas, Ma'au'au'au'au'au'au. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lakota Hobai. I serve as the tribal historic preservation officer for the Machu Manchuish Band of Potawatomi Indians. And I'm an enrolled member of the citizen Potawatomi Nation located down in Oklahoma. And so, and also I'm here in a professional capacity as the developer for the Machu Manchuish Band. And their address is 2872 Mission Drive, Shelbyville, Michigan. And so, um, the Machu Manchuish Band has been a member of the Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance and been partnering with the Coastal Alliance since 2018. And in addition to the various reviews that have been ongoing for this proposed marina, we've also worked on other projects with the Coastal Alliance. And this is because so much of the area that the Coastal Alliance is looking to protect includes what my, Matthew Bustler identified as the cultural, or the Kalamazoo River mouth traditional cultural property. And so there's a lot of overlap and kind of thinking about the preservation and protection of that area. For the last several centuries, the thought has always been destroy these places, destroy these natural places, and we won't come back to them as a descendant of a tribe that was removed from this place, from these places. We still have stories about these places. We still come back to these places and we tell our younger generations. In particular, I can speak from personal experience, my grandfather specifically bringing us through Michigan to these places, to the Kalamazoo River to talk about what these places meant to us, to make sure that that history and that knowledge was never forgotten. So with that, um, when the township board had reviewed this project previously, uh, there was at that point little to no communication with the tribes about what was going on and what was being proposed for this project. We were primarily notified through the state and federal permitting processes. And so at that point, um, the tribes began trying to kind of understand, you know, what this would all entail. Because despite, um, understanding that this place has always been historically and culturally significant, it's also helping make your case to a body that even not even understand our concerns. And so with that, throughout that process, as was passed out by the Coastal Alliance's legal counsel, they provided the ethnographic report that our tribe had developed. And, um, so one, I also just want to make a note, this report documents some of our most cherished knowledge. And so I, I hope that all of you treat it as such. It's also a document that we treat as highly confidential. Um, it's not something that we share lightly. And with that, you know, I would ask that, you know, outside of the board and the individuals that received the report tonight, that you not share that outside of yourselves. Um, and if an individual requests it, hopefully please direct them to our office. And so with that, you know, um, this is just one example of the evidence that has come up since 2018, 2017, 2018, um, that has been ongoing in this permit review process. And in addition to that, there's some other supplemental materials that have been determined that have been referenced by the Coastal Alliance, such as various findings by the Army Corps of Engineers, also recommendations from the Advisory Council on Restorative Preservation, and also the Michigan State Restorative Preservation Office. Um, so with that, you know, I'm happy to provide any materials that are requested. It's all part of the public record as those various permitting processes and reviews continue. Uh, also, I would like to extend an invite, you know, to a representative or a staff member. We are actually having our first coordinated joint agency government meeting regarding the various permits and kind of the extent of what each of those reviews include. And that meeting is this Friday at the Machu Manchuish Band's campus. And so, you know, I can provide my business card, but if folks would like to better understand kind of what's going on at the state review level, what's going on at the federal review level, and also what's occurring. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom.
Anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand.
I would like to speak. I don't know how to raise my hand, but can you hear me?
You identify yourself, please.
My name is Christopher Deam and I live in Mill Valley, California, but I spend my summers at our family home in Sagittuck, which is the site of the old lighthouse on the old harbor. Uh, we've been on that property for 88 years. And my family has been instrumental in preserving the natural environment of the area. And, uh, uh, we have fought several lawsuits to keep the area natural south of the, uh, the river mouth. And so I'm very acutely aware of what it takes to, um, preserve such a special area in an endangered area, uh, such as a freshwater interdunal ecosystem. Uh, what I'm very concerned about, and I think the ZBA should consider is, uh, as an architect, it's unfathomable to me that a ruling was made that so blatantly goes against the, um, the zoning regulations. Uh, honestly, I, I wish I could get away with that, but it, uh, I've, I've never seen something like this so egregious. Um, and what's, uh, what's especially concerning is that the North Shore, um, uh, has used language and studies in their, um, application that are clearly greenwashing. They talked about clustering development where you look at the lots on the, uh, on the, um, uh, lakeshore and they're equally spaced out. Uh, you look at the, um, other lots and, uh, they, uh, around the harbor that they propose, they're equally spaced out. Um, so, uh, you know, we've got to look at what words mean and look at the track record of what these people are doing. And it does not appear to me that we can trust them at their word. For example, when they say the character of the, uh, river mouth is boating. Boating is an activity. It's not a character. The character of the area obviously is one of pristine dune land. So, uh, let's, let's look at the facts again as both sides are, are recommending. I'm also personally, our property is the very first residence south of the river mouth. And so we will be very directly impacted by the light pollution, the noise pollution, as well as the unintended circum, uh, unintended consequences of changing uh, the hydrological flow of the river. We don't know what's going to happen across the way, directly across at the basin, whether that will completely erode, whether it will affect, uh, the marshland that we are trying to predict.
Would your time is out?
Okay.
Hello, my name is Fran Kapaski Van Towne, and with my husband, I own Sweetwater Sailing Charters. Uh, what we do is we give people an experience to have a chance to go out and view the beautiful dune lands and the environment. In Sagittuck, I think I can say something that almost everybody will agree with, and that is that Sagittuck has been amazingly busy this summer. And that goes for the water as well, the water, the river. It's more populated with boats than ever before in our, um, thirty years of being on the river and watching it almost daily and using it. And initially, and from the beginning, our concern has been the development of the marina at the mouth of the river. Because the channel is very small, it's narrow. And then when you enter there, the turning basin is small on a curve of the river.
And then when you enter there, the turning basin is small on a curve of the river. The uh sight line is not straight. Um, plus there are new, uh, what's changed since seventeen and eighteen is, is um more boats, more people, more boats who um live here and have boats or have started charter businesses. There's a, a large schooner called the Serendi and several other smaller uh sailing charters. And those, along with the um, the really neat little electric boats that ply the river, are all using the river. And it's getting much more use than, than it ever has in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody at Zoom?
Anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak?
Yes, Doc.
Good evening. I'm David Swan. I'm a founding board member of A Lion Sign on a Cabinet, eight seven six Park Street in Sagatuck. The affidavit I wrote and signed is tab seventeen in your blue binder. Um, a few years ago, my family purchased the Gage Cottage, a small ninety-year-old cabin situated within the designated critical dune area. It is an inholding surrounded by Mount Altad Park and within about four hundred feet of the Oxbow School of Art. Most of you have likely um passed it while out hiking uh the Fishtown Trail area. Um, a few points I'd like to emphasize, my affidavit is new because my family and I did not own our home um in twenty seventeen. My affidavit is material in this case, now that I am a property owner within um the designated critical dune area. Um, um, out of the one thousand five hundred and eighty-one households in our tribe community, our cabin is one of only one hundred and seventy-five homes within the designated critical dune area. Um, I was going to talk about how I meet the three criteria, but I know that that is for the next meeting. Um, and I just wanted to uh address um some of my concerns about the uh new evidence um and what the North Shore shore um of Sagatuck attorney stated. Um, uh, Mr. Gabriel stated that not much has changed in the past six years. Um, however, the North Shore has changed their deep watering and construction plans significantly three times, so many times that uh the state permit expired. Um, US Army Corps of Engineers usually takes three months on average to review a permit. They're now in year number seven.
One minute warning.
That is primarily because of new evidence. Um, uh, the ethnographic report, um, and especially the US Army Corps of Engineer memorandum for record. Um, Mr. Gabriel's word salad that he sh- that he showed on the screen, Coastal Alliance claims there were eight words that also appear in the US Army Corps of Engineer memorandum for record. Lake Searchan appears one hundred times, Habitat appears forty-one times, Dune appears thirty-four times, Wetlands appears twelve times, Vibration appears two times, Boat Traffic appears fourteen times, Water Quality appears twenty-four times. This underscores the importance of new evidence, which you will see in tab eighteen in the very organized blue binder. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Well, we don't have Zoom. Is there anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Homer Engel. I live in three, three one, seven one Light House Way. I am a fourth-generation member of the Engle uh Engel here at this area. Third-generation garden captain, working Lake Michigan and navigating the river is how I make my living. And it's all, and it's all I've really ever known. And I'm very concerned about the sand, the safety concerns that this new harbor would have. Very, very congested harbor, and as was stated earlier, there's a lot of navigation. But also, the biggest thing that I'm also worried about is the impact that it would have on the fisheries. The local fishery is over a million-dollar industry in Sagatuck Township. City Sagatuck and City of Douglas combined. Michigan State Grant conducted a stu- uh study in Sagatuck, recognizing Michigan rank as second most popular destination for house eight acres, thirteen Florida. Roughly seventy-four percent of customers who travel to Fishon Charter boats list charter fishing as their primary reason for their trip to Sagatuck. These are the tourists who come for fishing. They buy hotels, they dine at the restaurants, and they shop in the local area. The Marina product poses a threat for the river, uh, the mouth of the river, where the water diversion into the chin of salmon, the cold of salmon, and the rainbow trout. As they return to their na- to the rivers, to the natural spawning grounds that are upstream. Maintaining the local fishery is very imperative to sustain our community. And uh, very much.
Thank you. Somebody, someone back.
I'm the ZBA council, board council. My name's Dale Harrison House, all the family appearing. You know, paying my dues anyway. Um, I'm gonna get right into the meat of this. My address is three one oh eight Sixth Century Street. Um, first I'm on the rest of this issue. Uh, nothing has changed. Think about that. The Supreme Court stepped in, the law of the man stepped in and said, we have a standard, a standard you use, former ZBA, scrap it. It's not, it's not even merit under current law. So I recommend that you know, move in that direction. Council for um North Shore is also indicated, something says that Sagatuck and Coastal Alliance has not suffered any harm different than others in the community. Well, let's focus on what they are about as far as I understand it. They're an ecological environmental organization, concerned about historical and cultural issues. And the plan's on stage, a lot of the issues were brought up, has been turned. Um, the supply commission dropped a bomb on this. They didn't look at the ordinance, but there's a clear prohibition while building a basin. So they didn't do any EIS, they didn't do an adequate cultural investigation. The structural documentation was not looked at. All these kinds of applying conditions, they didn't look at. So with the harm, now looking at new information, Dale provides some clarification. Well, a lot of the issues were overlooked back in the earlier part of the process. Uh, I see no harms, quite frankly, though. It's important that we address the dramatic situation that was caused by the township's global litigation. Um, and Steve Cushing, for example, the former zoning administrator, should never allow the application that North Shore's brought towards in a Marina to the surface as a kind of one minute.
It will.
Thank you. So Steve Cushing, the former zoning administrator, didn't fulfill his obligations, possibly, because he forwarded the allocation even though he knew did not match with his own name to the planning commission. The planning commission, and as the um under advisement, Mr. Smith at that time, believed that the D R and the court commissioners would take care of the marine issues, not worry about the zoning.
Thirty seconds.
So that's, it's so many oversights, and now we have a chance to bring more data in, clarify the situation, and get a little more harmony in protecting the integrity of our organs that we so value so much in all our lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. I have a little bit of a cold. Um, Scatabaska. Um, Oakdale Hall in Sagatuck, one forty-eight South River, and also three fifty-five uh Dugout Road in Sagatuck here, and then eventually six seven six six Sagatuck Beach Road. So tonight, we have Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance claiming to be an agreed party. This ultimately would be the question before you. New information, and I'll try to stay on new information tonight. The courts historically have been pretty clear about what information can be considered in an appeal. I consistently heard, quote unquote, that they are not in the record on appeal. They are not being considered by the court. There is nothing that has been done, there was nothing that was done by the original ZBA to prevent the applicants, the Coastal Alliance, from submitting this information prior to the two thousand seventeen eighteen ZBA meetings. Nothing. In fact, they could have hired their own experts, included the previous authored dissertations, included the affidavits presented tonight at the correct and the proper time. This would, what one would typically expect to happen. I know historically, you would not have gotten an argument from Mr. Straub or Mr. Gabriel. But here we are, settled with the instruction from Judge Robert Pengas, that he finds there's additional evidence that was, for good reason, not submitted, and you guys need to find it. And Sagatuck Coastal Alliance. I'm here to tell you that nothing additional submitted by this Sagatuck Coastal Alliance should be considered. Anything different would be a mistake, allowing Coastal Alliance to expand the record tonight to include new affidavits, new experts, new dissertations, and the largely inappropriate last page of their supplemental that says, we have future evidence and we want to reserve the right to supplement, would only span the scope of the original affidavits. Allowing the Coastal Alliance to add additional items that were not present in the original record would in turn require a North Shore, as allowed by the court rules, to supplement the record once again. Anything different would thus be described as like on a hamster wheel or would either come later or do as a moving target. North Shore's, what we presented, for your consideration and why it should be considered, North Shore's expert surveys responses, that's tremendous.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, they allow decision maker to make an informed decision based on allegation in the original affidavits. So why is North Shore not presented in the original ZBA meeting? Because they didn't exist. It took years to create these reports and respond to these things. A life lesson. I'm not an attorney. I don't expect and pretend to be one. But I can tell you from an October twenty-five eighteen hearing that I attended in Judge Pengas's courtroom.
Time.
If my wife can be timed, just finish this, it's her time. What if it's possible? But I don't know if it's your.
Sure, we're gonna answer.
All right. If my wife say wants to just finish this, thank you. I'm not an attorney, and I don't pretend to be one. I can however tell you that I understand from a motion hearing that I attended in the elegant county on October twenty-five, two thousand eighteen, I intended a motion hearing in Judge Robert Pengas's courtroom. This is the day that the court finds that the Coastal Alliance is not an agreed party. The Coastal Alliance, the beginning of proceedings began with Scott Howard, an attorney for the Coastal Alliance, trying to introduce new information on the record. The township's attorney, Mr. Straub, was present, and the North Shore's attorney, Mr. Gabriel, was present. Both mentioned it. But Pengas heard arguments and ruled that to allow this new information supplied by the Coastal Alliance to be added to the record. Judge Pengas has limited, limited the information then, and you should limit it now.
Are you getting close to being done?
Yes, one more paragraph. North Shore is praying the same October twenty-five, two thousand eighteen hearing. North Shore presented and had included in this motion, did no expert evidence that was allowed, was ultimately included in this decision. North Shore's expert surveys responses needed to be presented to allow the decision maker to make an informed decision based on the allegations of the original affidavits. North Shore's written confirmation. It really responds to that five thousand cuts, a box of mandates. Its information is appropriate, and it's appropriate to the items that are outlined in the original affidavits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
There's one on Zoom.
Go on Zoom. Okay, let's take you to Zoom.
Ah, yeah. Thank you very much for taking my comments. My name is Mary Hill. Um, I uh am located actually in Colorado, um, but I grew up in uh Sagatuck, went to Hope College, and uh, um, uh, and come back there regularly uh to vacation. Um, and I really just had one point to make, um, that the um, when considering impact uh of the construction, there's uh the, the amount, the im- one thing I noticed in an earlier hearing was that the amount of sediment to be removed and placed in the cleared area that we saw a picture of. Um, if you just take the volume of that material and divide it by the area, that's twenty, that's twenty-eight feet high over that whole area. Um, it doesn't seem like that gets mentioned very much. Um, but also for erosion purposes, it wouldn't just be twenty-eight feet high. It would have to be much higher in some parts of it, um, to try to avoid uh, uh slopes that would erode very easily. Um, so uh, the uh, so I, I would, I would, uh, also I am associated with the Dune Alliance, and um, it is, I think, an important organization um for the community to uh, uh, uh be coordinated with and for us to have um, a, a voice in this table, uh, I think is extremely important to have. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Um, my name is Nicholas Wallace. My address is thirty-five point four Dugout Road. And tonight I'm speaking on behalf of my family, Diane Beely, Adam Beely Wallace, and Michael Beely. Thank you to the ZBA for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you all in the audience for attending, participating. It's incredibly important concern within our state and our local community. Um, I urge the ZBA to consider my affidavit as new evidence since I wasn't eighteen years old yet in September of twenty seventeen. My family and I are likely to be more severely impacted than others in the community due to the proximity of the African's land, Marina Basin, and lay down area. The Marina will be visible from our dock and regularly utilized the Kalamazoo River by kayak and canoe, as well as land, any vertical natural area, probably the natural area. As an adjacent riparian, I'd like to have a conversation about my riparian rights, the fundamental layout of the code were to change, and introduce several dozen large yachts trying to navigate in a hard, heavily trafficked area. The proximity of the lay down area to my family cottage will impact our property rights due to structural noise and disturbance to the otherwise serene landscapes surrounding us, not to mention the likelihood of erosion, as previously mentioned, on the dugout road. It's impossible to quantify a peculiar interest on this property, one I plan on always keeping in the family. However, my special interest, property rights, and riparian rights will certainly do impact. The proposed Marina and lay down area surely will devalue the time I spend and the experiences I make at this cottage, and it will permanently transform the way in which I utilize my time here. I'm from Chicago. It will undo the very reason I wish to call this cottage my home someday. What exists at the mouth, the river mouth currently is a cultural, ecological, and historical trifecta of resources that we cannot afford to let slip away. Assigning a dollar value to the resources we are trying to pretend negates and negates the reality that what would be lost for my family and for those in the community who utilize this river mouth would be priceless. Considering what is explicitly stated in Article twelve, the Tribe Community Master Plan, In the Lakes and Streams Act, as well as handful of other state and federal laws regarding waterways and wetlands, it's clear to myself, from many others in the community, that this Marina violates local zoning, my property rights right here. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom?
Anyone else here? Well, it appears we, we're done with the open meetings. Part of this thing.
Public meeting.
Public meetings, part of this thing. Uh, I moved to, uh, can I have a motion to close the open meetings?
Close the public portion.
Public portion, sorry. Second. Uh, it's been moved by, I'm sorry, we wanted to know. Red, Walker, and uh, and second by Denise Whip, or by Catherine Justice, that we uh close the public uh, time portion of the meeting. All, all, for the meeting, motion.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion's carried. Uh, seems that we're done. So, uh, yeah, a motion to uh, let's figure this. Uh, I'm sorry, uh.
This part.
Ah, yes. Were you, motion to take the, this material under advisement, recommended a different date. We have a motion.
Uh, so moved. I'm confused what he's asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking.
What we're, what you want to do is to um take the material under advisement and move to adjourn during presently.
Okay.
And then announce another uh, kind of new date will be announced in the future very soon.
Okay, so the motion is to accept the material presented and uh move for adjournment.
Yeah. She said. Right, all motion.
That's a motion, that's a motion.
Motion's motion.
Be the second.
Right.
Very second. Uh, pick or vote? Any vote? All, all four?
Yes. Aye.
All opposed? All ready? We're closed. Meeting's closed.